Good afternoon, everyone. We're going to bring the meeting of the Board of Supervisors back to order just after 2:00 on April 5th. We are now on item number 20. This is Public Works. This provides staff directions on key decision points regarding new solid waste and recyclable material franchise, RFP, to be issued to the public bidders in June of 2018. We have Mr. Cooley. Who else you got here? You've got Darren and...
Darren and I got Carissa McAfee with Sloan Vasquez-McAfee.
All right. Go ahead. Let's take it up.
Mayor, members of the board, we're here before you right now to get, basically this is the first of two parts, to get some direction so we can actually start narrowing down and identifying what this RFP will look like. As you said, our franchise agreement ends in June 30 next year, so we need to get a new agreement negotiated and in place. So our goal, and you'll see, we'll roll out a timeline to you during the presentation, but our goal is we need to get a new agreement awarded by the end of this year to give whoever the franchisee time to purchase equipment, get ready to go, be ready to serve by July 1 of 2019. So early on, we met with you guys in November. We hired Sloan Vasquez-McAfee, who are really technicians in this field. This is what they live and do, to help us go through this process of drafting the RFP, doing our public outreach, and bringing something that we can actually put out to the public and get some real bids in here in the near future. So with that, I'm going to, well, yeah, with that, I'll turn it over to Carissa. She's going to go through our presentation, and then from there, we'll go open it up to our questions and comments.
And I think it'd probably be easier if we asked questions as we go along. If that's all right with you, Chris?
Yeah.
Okay. So, board, does that all right with everybody? I mean, then we can ask at the end, too. But I mean, if there's something that strikes you want to get an answer to while she's doing it, let's take it up then. Then we'll have public comment after the board gets done doing all this. Okay? All right. Go.
Honorable Mayor, Supervisors, thank you so much for having me here today. My name is Carissa McAfee, and I'm a partner with the solid waste and recycling firm Sloan Vasquez-McAfee. I've been working in this industry for over 13 years, and before that, worked 10 years in public health and safety. We're very excited to be here supporting Carson City moving forward and making these decisions. This is our primary focus with our firm. We help municipalities throughout the United States in making these decisions and identifying the priorities that help them move forward in the future of solid waste and recycling. Solid waste or trash, it's a personal issue. It's something we all touch every single day. It impacts every single member of the community, and we all bring our personal preferences and our priorities to our decisions regarding solid waste. But solid waste is also a civic issue. It impacts the health and the safety of our communities every day. And municipalities, whether they're the homes of 25,000 residents or 2.5 million residents, they're faced with the challenge of how best to manage this public health and safety impact in their community. As Rick stated, you're looking at conducting an RFP process because the current contract ends June 30, 2019. And before moving forward with the development of an RFP, there's some critical foundational decisions and direction that is needed in order to craft an RFP that best achieves the goals that meet the values of your community and the desired outcomes. We've provided some of the process milestones. We are early in the process. The approach that Carson City has selected has truly set the stage for success for two key reasons. First, it was started early enough so that discussion and debate could occur and decisions could be made, and there's plenty of time for a transition, which is a critical period. So there is a good amount of time in order to have a successful transition to new services or a new service provider. Also, the process started with public input. This doesn't always happen, and when it does, I'm thrilled because you really get a robust array of input from the community. And this community certainly stepped up and provided input. So it's great to see citizens engaged, but also citizens given the opportunity to do so. Once we have your direction regarding these key points, we'll do some further data analysis, and we'll draft a new RFP that will then come forward for further direction and input. So this is the first of two times that we will be in front of you. After that, there'll be an RFP process, and then at least a six-month period for transition because the procurement of the large capital items or setting up a new shop, it takes time to do that. So we like to allow for plenty of time in switching to new services. Before we talk about the key items that we're looking for direction on today, we wanted to discuss some of the completed steps and share some of the information that was gathered. So the two key steps that were completed were first gathering the stakeholder input, and then second, reviewing the current franchise agreement, which is almost 20 years old, and which is typical in most solid waste franchises. So this is what we almost always find when we come in to support a city is there's a 20-year-old contract, things have changed, and so we look for opportunities to introduce best practices. We try to really learn about the community because what works in one city may not be the best solution for another. We want to make sure that it's really specifically geared towards meeting the needs of this community. Also, we want to see what the competitive landscape is because if no other companies are interested in coming to the table, you're not going to achieve the competitive outcomes that you'd like to see. So we take a look at that as well. So for the stakeholder input, we had two methods of gathering that input. We had the public meetings. There were five different meetings that were held throughout the months of February and March at different times of the day. They were promoted in a number of different ways, and over 50 participants came to all of the meetings in total. And just some perspective, oftentimes, to get seven or 10 participants in public meetings aggregate is seen as a success. So really, there was a good amount of public input and a variety of perspectives represented at these meetings.
Before you go on, let me just make, I probably should announce Supervisor Monkowski's not here this afternoon. He left to go out of the country at noon today, so he's not going to be here this afternoon.
Thank you. The second method was the solid waste questionnaire. And again, to get 50 responses is typically seen as a good outcome. We were blown away at receiving over 475 responses, and the majority of those were completed online. The city system of having easy access to the website and then being able to translate the survey into something easily completed online, I think, really boosted the availability and the convenience for participation. But we also received hard copies in the mail. Some copies were emailed to me, scanned. I received faxes. So folks who wanted to provide input had any number of ways of doing so. There were also some that were turned in at the public meetings. So all of those were put together and used to put the information into some, hopefully, helpful analysis. Now, the next nine slides that we're about to get into, and I'll just briefly cover those, it's the tabulation of the questionnaire responses. And then what we did was we looked at the overall input from the community meetings and then the comments because there was a great deal of opportunity for residents to provide comments and feedback in the survey. It wasn't just yes or no. There were places for comments. We looked at all of the comments in aggregate, identified key themes or common trends, and then we looked for comments that were representative of those trends to bring that forward to you. So that was the process. So the comments that you will see on the following slides represent all of the feedback in aggregate. These are just some of the data points. The completed survey information was, or questionnaire information, was provided as part of the report, but these are some of the highlights that we wanted to share with you today. So overall, satisfaction is high. There was a good deal of satisfaction with service in general, with what was available to the public. There were some common issues that were brought up, and we'll address those in some later slides, some opportunities to enhance the new contract. One thing to point out is a good bit of the issues were a lack of understanding of what was included in the current contract versus what was desired. So opportunities for communication or for increasing the types of services available were identified. The next item is the mandatory service. The majority does want to see mandatory service, and this is really where a great deal of our research has gone into, to identify the best practices and really bring as much information as possible as you look to make these decisions. We have found that most cities of this size do require mandatory service because it is a health and safety issue. That's the most typical approach. Now, what is included in the mandatory service varies from city to city, and the level of service that's available or required, that certainly varies. And there's some that have all sorts of bells and whistles, and some that are very bare basic, you know, just the trash. And then there are some where there's optional additional bells and whistles that you can sign up for, but the common thread was the expectation that for the general health and safety of the community, that there be mandatory service.
Carissa, can I ask a question on that and the options that communities offer? One that intrigued me in the packet was the fact that if, depending on parcel size and record of hauling, that that was a condition for opting out. Can you describe that as it exists in other communities, just so I have a better understanding?
Certainly. For parcel size, say for example, you said that if you have a parcel five acres or larger, that you could apply for an exemption from service because maybe you have livestock or, you know, whatever the case may be. That could be one exemption. Another exemption we've seen is if there's proof of taking materials to the landfill, that can happen. I do want to make sure that I provide information that this requires a substantial amount of staff time for the administration. And there's often also, the limits are seen sometimes as arbitrary. Well, I have 4.75 acres, so why don't I qualify? Or, so it gets into this administrative challenge. However, some communities have decided that, you know, allocating significant staff time is something that is what they would like to do. Most cities, though, do have mandatory requirements with caveats that, say, for senior citizens, maybe there's a discounted rate, or that for individuals who are disabled, where they're able to have at no additional charge, the carts pulled out by the service provider to the curb for collection. There's others that have low-income caveats. So that's one way that we work to customize programs so that whatever the specific needs of any given community, that they can be met. And, you know, there's other communities, we see this a lot, where although the typical standard cart size would be the large size, where if that's cumbersome for a senior citizen or if maybe they don't have the space to store that, they would have the option of requesting like a 32-gallon cart, which is, you know, about this wide as opposed to this wide, and that can be a more manageable option. So there are ways to accommodate some of the real and, you know, concerning components that a few of the community members have while still addressing the larger health and safety needs of the community. We did hear a lot about concerns regarding the hoarding of trash and the vermin and the way wildlife is attracted. So that was one key component. Another was the illegal dumping, especially in the Bureau of Land Management lands, that just seeing the land contaminated by materials. And, I mean, the thought is, why would someone drive out to that land and dump the material when you could drive to the landfill? Well, some people do. Other issues that we heard a few times at community meetings was the burning of trash, and that creates a lot of air hazards, air quality issues that impact the community. So there were some very legitimate health and safety concerns that were brought forward, but there were also those folks who do take their grandkids with them every single week out to the landfill and get the lollipop, and that's, you know, they're being good, responsible citizens. Unfortunately, there's also those who aren't, especially if you have folks who are not long-term residents, they're maybe short-term renters or just, you know, visiting, and maybe they're just here for the week, and they enjoy their time, and then they leave their trash wherever and head out, and the community pays for that one way or the other. So we find that change is certainly difficult, any kind of a large change, especially one that impacts everyone. But our best practice approach is to approach a decision regarding mandatory recycling as a policy decision because it's really not price-sensitive. Those who don't want to pay $15, don't want to pay $10, don't want to pay $20, it doesn't matter where the price comes in, they just, they don't want to pay for it, for either very legitimate reasons or for not wanting to pay for it reasons. But it really does come down to a policy decision for the decision-makers as far as what type of a community is, what is your vision and goals for this community? How does that decision reflect the overall livability and beauty of the community? So some of those factors. So that's why we, one of the reasons why we recommend this as a policy decision versus a price decision. Shall I move on to the next ones? Or, okay. Single-stream recycling. This was a big surprise. Over 80% of the citizens wanted single-stream recycling. Now, it's important to acknowledge that you already have single-stream recycling. Residents may be putting it in different containers, but the material is put into a single truck and then taken for processing, which is the most environmentally sound thing to do. That's you're able to transport more materials and transport, those costs outweigh having it sourced separated. So that's been going on. But as far as carts go, folks don't like to see the material blown out of the crates. It's a litter issue. It's an inconvenience to carry the crates down to the curb when you could just easily roll a cart with one hand. My eight-year-old helps me roll my 96-gallon cart out. It's, they're pretty easy to maneuver. Others really stepped up and said that they wanted to make sure and preserve the life of the landfill, even though it has decades left. They want their children to be able to have children use the landfill and continue to experience that benefit that is rather unique to this city. Another interesting component is that folks were really willing to put their money where their mouth was when it comes to the single-stream recycling. There was not a lot of pushback on if there was a small but measurable impact on the rates, 5% to 10%. A lot of the comments were, of course, I don't want to pay more, but if that's what it takes, it's that important. So we also asked about the frequency of collection, and there were mixed results here. Bi-weekly, a lot of folks are used to bi-weekly, although they'd like a calendar to know when their bi-weekly is because it can be hard to remember. This is where some price sensitivity came in. I think there's a lot of curiosity as to, is there a $0.50 difference between weekly or bi-weekly, or is there a $5 difference? Or, you know, what are we looking at? So that's a question, but the single stream was the overwhelming, resounding consensus in this questionnaire. The next most important issue was yard waste. So many residents, especially comment after comment in the public meetings, concerns about not having enough capacity for all the leaves or the pine needles or any of the other yard waste and really needing a seasonal solution. The consensus is, please, let's have a solution. But there was not consensus as to what that would be because there's so many different options. There could be expanded trash collection where additional bags of yard waste are collected. There could be separate yard waste collection. There could be designated areas throughout the community during the seasons, the seasonal variations where folks can bring their additional yard waste. There's any number of ideas came up, but overall, please let us have yard waste solutions was heard loud and clear. And even a few folks asked for composting and brought that up, which was, would be a nice to have, but there was a lot of interest in yard waste. Now, as opposed to the recycling, folks don't want to pay more for it. They feel that it's already being collected, so why should there be an extra charge? They just want some sort of flexibility and ability to accommodate the seasonal variations that occur. The next few pieces aren't from questions, but were just general comment feedback from the questionnaire and then also from the public meetings. Regardless of the contractor or the contract, increased communication was requested. Really, what's available? Some of the questions on the questionnaire, the response again and again was, I didn't know we could do that. So they want to know what's available, where is it at, how do I get that information? So we noted that information for future agreement language. Also, call center or office. A good number of the issues that occurred were because what was called into distant call center wasn't communicated back to the local service operators. Once an issue was brought to staff level and the staff communicated it, city staff communicated it to the hauler, usually the issues were resolved immediately. It was just that the hauler never got the word back. So some sort of local call center or local ability to have a problem solver that folks could reach and contact is really important to improve the level of service and address that disconnect that's occurring. And then also, this just goes back to some of the inconsistency. Some drivers pick up three extra bags, some pick up six extra bags, some pick up one, some, there's some inconsistency, and we did hear that specific feedback both in the questionnaires and on, in the public meetings. So all of these issues can be easily addressed in contract language and brought forward at the future meeting once some of the foundational decisions are made. So in summary, the majority did ask for mandatory service. Overwhelmingly, there was a majority looking for single-stream recycling to occur. There was a strong request that some solution be identified for yard waste services. Customer service is definitely a hot point, and so looking for some consistency in communication and access is important. And then also, although there was a limited number of commercial businesses that participated, it was overwhelmingly residential participants, those who did participate. And I did receive a few emails, and there were a few participants in the public meetings and then a few of the questionnaires. There was a real concern about illegal dumping occurring in their dumpsters that they paid for. It's very frustrating. It happens a lot with some of the motels that are located with folks who stay for a short time or stay long-term, material just gets left. And so that's a real point of frustration. And then also, a desire for increased commercial recycling services was requested as some companies have external pressures to step up and be sustainable, and so they're looking for some additional support there. But the illegal dumping was the reason some people made such an effort to find me and make that comment. So that concludes the input part of the presentation. The next component is just some best practices that we wanted to bring forward for your information as you look at making these decisions.
Yes. One question with regards to construction and demolition waste. Is there any problem with separating that out to a private company?
In general, the more services that you can group together in a franchise, the more overhead costs are spread among all the customers, and so everyone experiences a benefit in that, in having the economies of scale. However, if one piece were to be broken out, that would be, that would be the piece. To break out commercial service and have separate commercial and residential, your residential customers would see an increase in their costs because all of a sudden, you're paying for two places, two electric bills. All of those economies of scale are lost, and everyone's rates go up. However, if there is a desire to engage some other local businesses in service, that is an option that is, that we frequently see in different franchises where commercial and residential is one franchise, and then there's open market for approved companies to come and provide that project-based, short-term, 40-yard roll-off. So it's not the weekly dumpster subscription service, it's that project-based, you know, wood landscaping material, that sort of thing. So that's what we see.
You may cover this later in your best practices, but is it possible to design an RFP that has, asks to price out both mandatory and non-mandatory services?
While it's, it is certainly possible as far as can I prepare two different RFPs with two different cost forms, it's possible. It's just not a best practice. And here are some of the reasons why. Typically, you'll want to have a, or typically it's found that it doesn't matter what the price is as far as if there's a 20% difference in if it goes up or down. Those folks who are not going to be happy about mandatory recycling aren't happy, no matter where the price point comes in. And it dilutes the ability of the RFP process to achieve some of the other goals that the community might have. For example, typically, we would, we would ask for direction for mandatory or non-mandatory so that if there's mandatory, the hauler can look at other benefits to the community that can be offered because so many of the costs are covered and that you have that incredible economies of scale that you don't have otherwise. With ready-to-serv approaches, which is the non-mandatory, what the proposers would have to do is they would have to look at, okay, how many residents currently participate in the program? With all of the attention this has been getting, how many additional residents will participate? And they're going to have to make a guess. And whatever that guess is, they're going to have to pay for that amount of equipment, personnel, et cetera. Those costs, though, they're going to allocate as if the minimum number of participants participate because they have to be able to cover their costs. They have to meet payroll. They have to be able to meet the loan payments for that capital equipment. So what you see is purchasing for a larger number of community members. Say they estimate 18,000 participate, but the cost, the fixed cost for that 18,000 is charged to the 14,000 that do participate. So they are subsidizing the other's choice option. There's a higher cost to them so that others can choose whether or not to participate is how that works. So they have to spend a great deal of time guessing that, allocating costs, and because there's risk, there's a great deal of risk. You have two issues that come up, and this is why we don't, we don't recommend it as a best practice, although, you know, we serve at your pleasure, but we don't recommend it as a best practice. The risk goes to the city because if they don't guess correctly and they can't cover the cost of payroll and the cost of those capital payments, they either have to come hat in hand, asking for a deviation from the contract, which we make ironclad, that you don't get to come back and ask for more money. However, you may be in a position where you have to provide more money so that services can continue for everyone. That becomes very difficult. The other impact of the risk is the The other impact of the risk is the increased cost for the residents who do subscribe because the service provider has to be prepared with the extra carts for all the people who may or may not subscribe. Extra drivers are ready to go for all those people who may or may not subscribe. The additional number of households may require two or more additional trucks which at 350 to 400,000 apiece may or may be something that they can cover in their capital funds. So these are some of the challenges. So we could have one process that addresses this and then a separate process where there is a fixed number of households and they're able to enter in all the data points that we're able to provide and provide a really good estimate and in so doing, in that process, identify the best value and cover you know other components of costs that are there. The other challenge is these, I brought this just to show, this is the most recent RFP that I issued about two months ago. This is just the RFP document and then there's a draft agreement which is typically 90 to 100 pages. That also includes all the rules for them to follow and then they submit binders or however we ask for it, you know that are about this large. It's diluting their ability to really focus and give you something innovative and that addresses all of the needs that are coming up and instead of spending time coming up with the best solution for leafs, they're figuring out the math of which they need to do. So technically, we can, yes technically we can prepare two. We just don't recommend it as a best practice.
How about a new contract or an RFP process that has, that splits out yes or no on CD, CND? I mean prices it out in the same RFP, not two or?
I want to make sure I'm understanding. So a, an RFP where, a single RFP where you can either respond to do residential and commercial or you can respond to do the CND or you can respond to do AMB?
Well, I want to think about it a little bit, I was to go down the road here but what I was thinking about is as an RFP that has, okay assume for argument purposes, talking purposes, a single stream. Can you do a single stream say reply on this including, that includes all the services including CND and then what would your cost be if you took out CND? Can you do that?
Yes, and we would, if we did that, it would be, it would be that AB or C option where all of the above, just the residential and commercial or just the?
Well, they could answer all those if they wanted to.
Yes, they could and basically the way that our, we actually provide this like 30-page spreadsheet that proposers have to fill in, the data points and we have all the formulas set up. So basically, we would just be providing different sets of formulas for those data points because the number of customers wouldn't change. It would just be the allocation of those costs of the equipment, the drivers that would be allocated to serve a community of this size with this number of businesses. We'd separate that out so that we could see what that would look like. And there's a good chance that some companies that would not have the resources to propose for all of residential and commercial would propose to be a construction and demolition which you could just select one or you could have a process where as long as you've met these requirements, you've met our insurance requirements, you meet our safety requirements, you know that this is what you have to do to be eligible to serve our community, that they are given a three-year or five-year approval to provide service and there's just a periodic check to make sure that those insurance policies and that there's not been a, you know they haven't been cited a number of times by the authorities or something like that.
What's the standard length of, the recommended length of contract?
For a city of this size with the capital investment, we typically recommend about 15 years and then maybe a two-year extension option so that if, so that either at year 13 you could decide to go ahead and move forward with another procurement process or negotiation or after 15 years you could trigger that two-year extension. 15 years is a good amount of time because it allows the impact of the capital cost to be spread out as much as possible to have the least impact on the ratepayers but also isn't so long that you know you aren't able to address issues if they were to come up although our contract will have liquidated damages and all sorts of other things to protect the city in the meantime.
And on food waste, what's your recommendation going to be on food waste?
We, food waste is such an exciting opportunity. So many new services have come up even just in the past three to five years. However, the cost of food waste service is rather high right now especially if there's not local infrastructure. So what we've been really working hard to do is to incorporate flexibility into the contract so that if you Mr. Mayor found, you heard of a new program where some agricultural material can be made or whatever the case might be. If you identified that program, you would have the ability to negotiate that in at a reasonable rate without opening the entire franchise and you wouldn't have to wait the 15 years to do it. So right now, is there a food waste solution that would not impact rates in a way that from my opinion might not go over so well with the ratepayers? I'm not aware of one right now. However, in two or three years, one might come up and it's important to us because of how dynamic this industry has become that you have the ability to be dynamic with it but without having to open up the whole franchise or go through a whole process. And typically our language would say, we would like to see the service that we found, you submit a price for that, we'll negotiate it and if you don't like it, that piece of the service could be broken out and another contractor could, you know someone else exclusively provides it or someone else wants to, they'd be able to provide that but not impact the contract with the current franchise provider, just be that service.
Okay, thank you.
And what about cardboard recycling?
Cardboard recycling is, it's one of the most valuable commodities that there is. It's especially for businesses. Now a lot of businesses, your large big box stores, your Walmarts, they have separate contracts with companies like Kimberly-Clark and others where they actually compact the cardboard and it's taken away and it's recycled and it's part of their economic system and their transportation system as well. We do see though that for your small and medium-sized businesses, not only would it be fantastic to not have that cardboard going into your landfill and taking up space for the future, but it could also be a potential opportunity for them to save money. Here's an example of how that could work and what we're recommending. Say right now a company has one three-yard bin which is a pretty standard-sized dumpster and it needs to be serviced twice a week. They pay a certain fee for that and it goes twice a week. Well, it could be that if they had a recycling dumpster that they could place all their cardboard and you know maybe they also have a lot of paper or a lot of plastic, whatever the case may be. They may only need to have the trash serviced once per week. If we price it right, they could potentially save, we ran the numbers and it's anywhere from $200 to $300 per year plus they're doing the right thing because they would be getting one service of recycling which we would recommend be offered at a percentage, say like 75% of the trash rate and then just one time per week versus two time per week trash service. So there's some good economic benefit to your local businesses which is always a good thing but also some good environmental benefits as well in providing those cardboard and other recycling solutions.
How does that apply to residences? I have friends that order a lot of things, I mean they generate a lot of cardboard.
So here's what we're recommending is that incorporated in this proposal or this RFP that you have a 96-gallon recycling cart, you know they're large, of course seniors would have the option for a smaller one if that's something they wanted to ask for. And I travel a lot, I'm an Amazon shopper, I get lots of boxes, I just fold those up and put it in my 96-gallon cart along with all the cereal boxes and everything else and it's amazing what you can fit into a 96-gallon cart. And if there's weekly service, that would more than you know take care of the needs of most households. If there's biweekly service, there could be the opportunity for those households that are really avid recyclers and with the great programs going on at the schools that we got to hear about and you know the real focus on recycling, a lot of times kids are the motivators or the, they help us remember, that goes in the recycling cart. If you have households that need more, we would recommend saying that the service provider had to provide a second recycling cart at no charge as long as there weren't abuses of that cart like it's used for trash. If that were the case, they would have the ability to remove that from the properties but typically if you go to the trouble of asking for a second recycling cart, it's because you generate a lot of recycling. So that's, the cardboard, the paper, the mailers, magazines, that's a huge amount of volume and would really reduce the weight of the trash cans that are being rolled out. Plus the carts have nice wheels and they're easy to push versus carrying bags or tubs. Did that answer?
What about the opportunity for not regular trash but I really see our problem in the open space BLM areas, couches, mattresses, paint cans, washing machines. So while we're trying to actually think we're, the health and safety, I'm not seeing it as the everyday trash, I'm seeing it as the stuff, so I'll just use myself as an example, is where do you take your old CRT computer screens? And so that's what I'm seeing dumped is because, couple of things, right? Know where to take it, no information on where to take it. So is there anything in any of these proposals that we can do to say, hey, I don't know, twice a year you're gonna do, community cleanup day, whatever? We're working on some stuff in the city to do that. What's your thoughts on that extra track?
So many residents absolutely are looking for that type of solution and a lot of the best contracts we've seen offered those types of solutions and what we're really looking to do in customizing a recommended program for Carson City is looking to see what can we add that would be of true value and of interest to residents that wouldn't make the prices you know go so high but that would address some of the current needs. So as you noted, having some sort of a bulky item collection program, whether in some contracts, there's the option to say have two collections per year at no additional charge of you know items up to X size. In some cases, there's a decision by the community that we'd like to have that service but have a nominal fee so that it's covered by those who choose to use it. These are the types of programs that are much more accessible when you have a mandatory program because the cost is spread out across a much larger base and there's more wiggle room for the contractor to come in and provide these kinds of services at a better value. Another service that we often see required as part of the, having the privilege of being your franchise service provider would be to support community cleanup events, that there be a requirement that X number of large bins be provided at X number of community events per year at no additional charge to the city and therefore the ratepayers, that's part of what's included. Some also have programs where up to a certain number or a certain weight or a volume of illegally dumped materials can be handled by the service provider. And our goal is to find that level where it creates value and addresses your need without adding significant additional costs that all of a sudden people are like, oh, this is more than what we were looking for. And that's part of the analysis that we do once we have your direction of these foundational issues is look and see, okay, what can we ask for that would address those exact issues? Additionally, communication was a big piece and the need for annual mailers that would need to be printed and mailed and so that's a cost that would need to be factored in and covered. And if you're spreading that among a lot of people versus a portion of the people, these things just have less of an impact but everyone has the information as far as when is my collection day, what's included, how many bulky item collections can I pick up and where do I call and what's the rules and where do I take my paint cans? And typically the collection service provider would also incorporate any of Carson City's programs like the household hazardous waste that's at the landfill or other programs that information would be in one place. It would also be on the city's website, it would also be required to be on a special page for the service provider's website. So there'd be multiple ways to find this information and all of the information would be included in a welcome packet that would go out, attached to the carts when they're delivered and then to any new resident when they get their new carts. It has the packet that explains, here's how this works, here's what you put in these carts, here's what days, here's those items. And having the ability to have your public works folks or whomever contact the service provider and say there's a washing machine on you know whatever, yeah, the intersection of this and this and that there be a requirement in the contract that it be picked up within 48 hours and, or 24, whatever your price sensitivity is, the faster the more resources they have to put to it. But we find that sweet spot and we're closely with staff to understand what the need is and what, you know where that point is.
So on the carts, I noticed that, are you suggesting that 32-gallon, 96-gallon, whatever we end up with, that they are mandatorily also supplied by the vendor so I can't go to Costco or Walmart and get my own cart?
So for a 15-year contract, and this has changed since the current contract was put in place so that, the way the current contract was set up at that time, that was good but now the way current contracts are set up, for a 15-year contract, the service provider should provide at no additional charge the carts that are used. So there would not be a rental fee, there would not be a monthly additional charge, it would be here are the two carts that come with the program, everyone's cart looks the same, the streets look nice and neat, you have your carts lined up, you know what goes in the carts, there's not confusion as to what's put into what. So that's, that would be a requirement and a component of why, you know over 15 years, the average 96-gallon cart is around $55 to $60 depending on the pricing deal that a company has with the manufacturer. So to spread $100 or $110 out over a 15-year period, 15 times 12, I mean it's pennies of cost for them and it's a big benefit to the residents and to the community to have that consistency.
Could you flesh out your reference in your yard waste, part of your presentation of unlimited collection, what does that entail completely?
So there are, what we heard is that there are a lot of trees, that's what we heard and that one community member might not have that many trees and another might have 10 bags every week worth of leaves that they're raking up whether it's from their own trees or their neighbor's trees that are blown in. And so people just want it collected. So there was a request, a number of requests, a consistent drumbeat that whatever this program looked like, that it not be something where you get 10 stickers to put on bags and when you run out, that's too bad. Or that you can put one extra bag out or two extra bags out because it just doesn't meet the needs of this community. And so what, what we are recommending or wanted to explore with you is going to the contractors or the haulers that participate in this process and saying to them, okay, you provide leaf service in all sorts of communities, what is the most effective service at the lowest cost that you can bring here and tell us why, explain to us why this is going to work and be of the best value so that then you're able to get the needs met and that would be the bottom line. You have to get it all. There has to be a way whether it's self-collection and taking to a, to 40 yards that are placed in certain neighborhood parks on certain days or you know however, under your direction and under your staff's direction however that would look or whether it's a truck going by or a separate flatbed truck where they just collect it all and have that allocated during the seasons when it's really, where there's a lot more material. But folks want it taken away. It's a real frustration to have to kind of measure out how many bags to put each time or sometimes they're not all taken and then they have to bring them back and, or they negotiate with neighbors which you know that people have been very creative in their solutions and solid waste should be And, and solid waste should be, for it to work really well in a community, it should be mindless. You should just be able to know, like, it, it should be something you don't worry about every week. If we create a, if I do my job, hopefully it's something where you know what day and you just tip the cart a little bit, it rolls nicely and, and it's easy to get out to the curb and you know what to put in the recycling and your trash isn't overfilled because you have a recycling cart. And all of your green waste, in whatever manner it is that, that was decided upon, is, is taken care of and you don't have to, it's not this weekly worry of what am I going to do with my leaves?
Go back to best practices.
Okay, so the, the other best practice of roadway impacts. This is something that, that we heard, of course, the collection trucks are probably the heaviest trucks that are on your roads daily and are impacting roadways daily. So we've seen, this is very common for municipalities to include either as a component, in addition to a franchise fee or as part of, of a franchise fee, some sort of a mechanism to cover some of those costs that are directly caused by the, the daily impact of, of those trucks. So that's, that's something that we've, we've seen as an opportunity here to provide added value to, to the city.
What do those fees look like? Say, call it a road impact fee.
A common number I've seen is 1% or half a percent. And it depends on the size of, of the city and what the rates are, what that, what that needs to be. But it's, it's certainly a, a reality.
Let's not penalize people, but let's get the money.
So just, these last, I'll move very quickly. A lot of companies are, are interested. They, they're very popular. And this is a good thing for the process because the more interest, the, the more competitive the process and the more innovative the solutions will be. And that's, that's a good thing. And just this week, I was contacted by Republic Services that would like to be added to this list. That was after this was put out. So a lot of interest, which is a positive thing. We provided this timeline. It's, it's a proposed timeline. It's really just for your information and we can review it again at the next meeting. And then the decision points, which there are four really critical decision points that will allow us to move forward in developing these further components of the RFP. We've, we've been able to talk through as, as questions were asked. So I won't spend any more time than to say, we, we do recommend that you continue with franchise residential and commercial service. And then there's, you know, there's some flexibility in how you'd like to approach the, the CND. We do recommend, for the, the many reasons mentioned, mandatory service. Single stream service is, is recommended and, and we'd like to see the pricing difference because it's, it should, it's, we have the numbers when, when it comes to entering in the, the specifics or the inputs. The haulers will have those exact numbers and be able to provide the, the difference and then a value decision can be made.
What do we know about the level of penetration for mandatory service now in our community versus voluntary?
Right now, from the, the latest numbers that, that were provided by the current franchise provider, it's just shy of 15,000 households are participating.
15,000 households, what?
Are, are, are signed up for service. Out of 21,000 to 22,000 occupied households now, with the caveat that some of these are households that are maybe duplexes, et cetera. So, so the number could be anywhere between 22,000 to 25,000 households. So.
Yeah, I have waited, awaited the RFP process before talking to anybody face to face, but I've had a couple of contacts from people who are interested in this process. And one of them suggested that it should be a competitive environment. What's your view on that?
We, we strongly agree with having a very competitive process.
Not a process, but a competitive, you know, more than, more than one.
Oh, oh, I see. I apologize. I misunderstood. We, we do not recommend having multiple service providers for a few practical reasons. First of all, there's an impact on rates. When everyone participates, there's the economies of scale that a city can negotiate versus individuals. Second of all, you have multiple trucks out on your roads every day. So it impacts the wear and tear on your roadways and then also the safety of the community as they go by schools or in residential neighborhoods. That's, that's one of my big concerns when I think about trucks out there. Let's limit the number of trucks. Another, another issue is that you lose, it impacts the livability of your city. You may have, instead of a Tuesday collection day on X road or in X neighborhood, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, or multiple trucks any given day with different color carts, different types of service. And so it's just, and then also the service level goes down because there's not the ability to mandate all of the additional services that, that would benefit the community, like the, like a community cleanup or the bulk item, because it's just cost prohibitive if you're not able to have, have the economies of scale. So those are some of the, the reasons why. For CND, competitive can, can work because it's on call, it's, somebody's got to go out there with, with the, the Dropbox. So, but with commercial and residential, the best value and the greatest safety and the least impact on your community is achieved through a franchise.
So if, if we were to look at mandatory, one of the things I saw, I think, I'm not sure if it was Reno or Washoe County, but one of the big issues became that they were leaning the property. So my question is, we can do mandatory and exclude vacant lots because that's what they didn't do there. And so people are having absolutely no trash. It's a vacant lot and they were hitting them with the 20 bucks a month and then they go around and lean the, all these vacant lots. So what does mandatory? I think it's important that everyone understands, what does mandatory mean? Every single parcel gets a garbage fee of whatever the, I just want to understand that more clearly.
We're not recommending that empty households receive service. So what, what would occur is whether I owned or rented number one Main Street, when I moved in, I would look on the city's website and see, oh, that's the number I called to set up my trash service. I would call, set it up, provide my payment information or set up billing, receive service. And then if I were to move or sell or stop renting, then I would call and cancel and then no service would be provided until the new owners or the new tenants arrived in, in that household. So the, we don't, we're not recommending that vacant lots, and there's, and there are a lot of vacant lots here. Just, I mean, looking at, at the numbers, there's, there's a, you know, a, a good number and there's, there's a lot of rental households. So there's, there's turnover there, there's vacancies. So, so service would, would be set up that way. And we provide as much statistical census city data to the haulers as possible to say, okay, here's the number of households, here's the percent occupancy rate, here's the number of renters, the percent occupancy rate, so that they can really, you know, hone in on what, what that would look like. As far as liens go, that, that is a policy decision. There can be, there are a number of ways to, to handle delinquent payments that can either fall onto the hauler to handle or the city could have a, a method of handling. And it, it really depends on how other issues are, you know, is, does the city typically have liens for, for lack of a moment? Or would the city prefer just to have an enforcement type deal where if, if a home is occupied and it hasn't signed up, where the hauler would be able to put a notice and say, please sign up by next week and we'll do this. And if not, then in our monthly or whatever meeting to the city, we'll have a list of those occupied homes that aren't signed up and we can go through that.
Where are you in your presentation? Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I am done. I just hit the last slide, so.
I'm thinking, in my years as mayor, you know, the, it kind of struck me as odd, not odd now, but, you know, that the more trash you have, the better it is. It just seems counterintuitive, but, you know, but I learned that lesson. All right, all right. Board, let's take some public comment if it's okay with you, then we'll see where we go. Public comment? Anybody want to weigh in?
Don Leonard, Carson City. A couple of comments. We've lived in our home now here 16 years and we are very pleased with the garbage service that we get today. They are timely, they are regular. If there's something blowing down the street when we have wind once in a while, I've seen the drivers get out there and retrieve it. So I am, we're very happy with them. The one thing that got my attention was mandatory. Now, in our neighborhood, we had a lady older than me bought a home. She was there by herself. She had yard service, so there was no yard residue anywhere. She had a daughter that lived down the street. Once a week, she took her little bag down the street and put it in her garbage, her daughter's garbage can. She did not need garbage service. So I think you have to be careful with what you do there. Seniors can't afford much more increased cost around here and that is one that sort of got my attention.
What if your cost went down because it was mandatory and there are more participants in the system?
Why would you force somebody to need garbage service if they don't need it?
Talking about you, though. I mean, suppose the cost went down, would that help or not?
Well, I got a $7 increase in my social security check, sure.
Got more ideas.
You didn't want a direct answer, did you, Mayor?
No, fine. Go ahead, Don. It's good to have you up there.
Don, can I just ask you a question? What would you say to certain exemptions as Carissa mentioned that, that are outlined for people like your neighbor that you just discussed? I mean, do you, mandatory with exemptions specified?
Yeah, I think you'll have to dream up some exemptions. You know, some people don't need the service. It's like yard service. This lady had all of her yard waste taken care of. If you have your lawn mowed, mowed like we do now, they take the dead grass away. We've seen people have trees trimmed. Who's ever doing the service takes that away. So I think, well, we're very happy with what we have. Leave me be. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Don. And it's always a pleasure to see you here at the board. I mean that.
And I'm magnificent. Last time I told...
Well, we agree today. Mr. Jolmy, good afternoon to you.
Hi, Stacy Jolmy. Unlike Don, I, I have the opposite experience. I have not been happy with my present collection for a variety of reasons. One, I live in an area of town that requires me to have a bear-proof container. I routinely have bears. I've had a bear bend my garage door to get at my garbage can. And after he or she did that, I got a bear-proof can. And waste management has broken two of my bear-proof cans that I've invested $300 a pop in. And they make me sign a document that says they're not responsible for damage unless they provide the can.
So they say, waste management, a bear can't break it, but they can.
Yes.
I don't know what, I don't know what that says, but, all right. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
My can is never upright when I come home. It's always laying on the ground and so the lid gets snapped back and broken. So I'd like to see the franchise agreement include information about the provision of a bear-proof can. I'm certainly willing to spend a little more for that, but as a reminder, and I think you guys know this, the city has an ordinance that requires people to provide for bear-proof cans if they live in an area that has bears. And so I, I would like to see that somewhere included in there, either as an option or a provision if you live in certain parts of town. I think, I absolutely think it's necessary. I think the other thing that's absolutely vital is the provision of local customer service. You can't find any information on waste management site about Carson City. You can see national information, you can see what they recycle generally, but then if you put something out that's recyclable in Phoenix, it's left on the ground here in Carson. And there's nowhere to go. So I would really encourage you to have, require them to have a local office. I know there's a cost involved with that, but you can't beat customer service. And in my mind, you can't be walking into an office somewhere and looking someone in the eye and getting a straight answer. And finally, I'll just weigh in on the mandatory thing. You know, no one, we all live in Nevada because we like our independence. No one likes to be told what to do. Having said that, I, I feel like we've reached a point where it, it's time. That's just my two cents worth. I think we should have mandatory service. I think if we can craft some exemptions that don't drive the cost up to the point where it isn't beneficial to have mandatory service, then that's great. And I absolutely think that mandatory service has to include single stream recycling. You know, we're not, it's just time. It's, you know, I know we don't like it, I know we don't like being told what to do, but there are a lot of reasons that I think we should do it. So, thank you.
Ms. Macquarie, good afternoon to you.
Good afternoon. My name's Ann Macquarie. I'm a 30-year resident of Carson City. I've been recycling in Carson City ever since I got my first plastic bin recycling containers. I'm a very faithful recycler. I've been sorting recycling all those years. I take my paper one place, my cardboard somewhere else, and I take whatever waste management will take. But you know what? I'm getting old and I would so much like to put that all in one bin together like 100 million other Americans approximately can do. So I strongly support single stream recycling and it's just time. Thank you.
What does that say, Ann, about mandatory versus non-mandatory?
I support mandatory recycling. You know, I support it because if that's what it takes to get single stream recycling, I think it's worth it. And honestly, I hadn't thought of all of the other reasons that your consultant gave, which I think are also very good reasons. So I support that strongly as well.
Thank you. Other public comment? Good afternoon. Is that Aster?
Yes.
Hi. The lights go down here and I have a difficulty seeing out there, but leave them down, that's okay.
My name is Aster Gurma and I'm the resident of Carson City. And also, I'm from Nevada Green Institute, which I founded. I support the single stream recycling, which shows the 83% of the citizen supported. And I would, I would like to highlight a certain point that the presenters already explained. As individuals or consumers do not have to do the sorting, they are more encouraged to participate in the curbside recycling program. I support the mandatory because the more the participant increased in, in this process, the cost will be lower. Second, recycling helps sustain our environment, reduce and saves energy. Third, it will prevent pollution, reduce the need for landfills and incineration, preserve natural resources, protect our open space, and even help the economy by protecting and increasing the number of manufacturing jobs. What is the challenge? Because any recycling program must be effective, cost-effective, and efficient. So we build on that concept. The challenge is the most notable criticism about single stream recycling system is that it led to a decrease in quality of materials recovered. Putting all the materials into a single bin surely increase the level of contamination in terms of... in terms of such problem as broken glass and the tendency to toss non-approved materials into the recycling bin. How to reduce the negative impact of this process, which is the best we have now, the single stream, adopt best practices. To run a successful and economically viable, viable, single-stream recycling program, we need to have strategies to increase residents' participation. One is mandatory, and the other is education, to end them, to minimize contaminated recyclable materials. The proposal or the franchise agreement to include continuous public outreach program. One is to increase public awareness to achieve high residential recycling rates. This is the key because cost is associated with it. Second, increase public awareness of the importance of proper waste disposal to minimize contaminated recyclable materials. This in turns will save money and increase program efficiency. Ultimately, it helps to divert the greatest volume of recyclable materials from the landfills. To sum up, efficiency and cost-effectiveness is very important on this proposal should be included. Increase participant in this program, and knowledge how to do it in this program is very relevant. Without this three important strategy, this single stream, the people, 83% of residents who support it may not be happy with the result. Thank you.
Aster?
Good question.
I need just a little more clarification if I can, please. So, because I've got that from a couple of other people that have actually emailed me and things to say. How is single-stream effective because most of the items are contaminated? And so you're trying to accomplish recycling, but they end up not being able to salvage the vast majority of the product because of just what you said, broken glass and all of that. So what are you trying to say? We really should have two bins, one for anything that's recyclable versus not? I want to understand what your conversation was with this.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
No, that's very good. In a single stream, I did research, and I learned best practices from other cities, big or small. It's a process. One is, in any company, they use single-stream recycling, any, in the city, they don't achieve 100% success immediately. It should be a continuous learning and public awareness of how to do it. I don't mean in single-stream recycling, it doesn't mean having two bins or, like we do now. However, the single-stream recycling, there is a materials defined what type of things needs to be recycled. We, the citizens, should understand what is this. Second, some bottles, I'm not an expert, she will explain better than me, I'm just focusing on the strategy part of it. And then some bottles also needs to be cleaned, and then if it is broken, they contaminate the paper. If it is a contaminator paper, it's wet. So instead of we recycling, actually, everything would go to the dumper, so dumping. So that is it. But even now, with the waste management recycling, there is a thing we can put, there is a thing we can't put. But in the public awareness outreach program, which other cities some failed, is they starting, now sharing information what is relevant in the first year or six months, and they stop doing it. So this is very important, including in the proposal, is a continuous public awareness program in different formats, in the website, in, with the mail, I don't know, whatever it is appropriate, the city does. That is, I want to say, but there is a requirement to do in the type of material we need to recycle.
Aster, I'm just going to ask you a question. A simple sticker on these bins stating what can go in them would be, it would be that simple, and that could be updated annually. Something like that could go on each of their bins. That way, we know what goes in what, people know what goes in what, so they're not confused.
Yes, yeah. But I have learned, and in reviewing many documents from other cities and then participating in another state, is always we have a tendency of the first thing, we see it and we forgot. And then using a different media of sharing information, help the public to understand better. Don't forget that. The single-stream recycling is, there is two, the determinant factor for that program to be successful. Cost, participation. So the cost will hurt the city, the budget. Therefore, it's very important a city, the provider, include that things, a continuous learning. I want to learn every day, want to say, "Oh, I know," but I forgot, how was it? You know, you know what I mean. So there's a different media to use, nonprofit organization, the Capital City Sustainable Partnership, we just formed, that also contribute boosting the idea of public awareness of that. And then cost and participation is the key, the determinant factor of this program.
Okay, thank you. All right. Other public comment? Yes, sir. Good afternoon. How are you today?
Fine, thank you.
Good.
And I've been here since like 1954 or so. So I'm not just a transient that doesn't take care of his home and gets, leaves garbage laying around. But when it winds and, when the wind blows in my neighborhood on collection day, I have to go out and collect all the stuff that's in my shrubs. I, I switched to my own, I dropped waste management back in eight or nine months ago, and I've been doing it on my own. I kind of like it. The, the new, the new routes, if you're going to be going out in the rural areas, seems to me that it's not, might not be that economical, gas-wise, for the, those big equipments to go out there, because it's all spread out. I'm in an urban area, so I can't, I can't hang my head on that. I've been in my house since, for 28 years, and I've, I've got all the receipts that I go, that I've gotten from waste, from the dump site. So you can see that I've, I've been taking care of my stuff. My wife and I are retired, empty nesters. We fill up a 96-gallon bin once a month. And if we have a little more recycles, then I put it in bags so I could take all to the, to the dumps at one time. I'm not quite sure what I'm going to do with my 96-gallon cart, because it sounds like it's preferred for the service provider to provide the carts. One thing I noticed, if I don't have any garbage and I just want to take recycling out to the dumps, it's free. And in the past, when I've left before, when I was being, having pickup service, when I put cardboard out there, it looked like it was just thrown in with the other garbage. And, and like right now, my, I just bought a TV. My truck is, whole bed is, it's got a big old piece of cardboard that I don't feel like chopping up or bending and putting it in a bin. So, so I guess I just, I do not want the mandatory. I'm kind of like Stacy, I like to be independent. I've got solar, got electric car, and I kind of enjoy going out to the dumps. I remember going out to the dumps with my dad. I think it was somewhere near Draco Way or over there, rolling tires down there, throwing bottles and stuff, but that's probably neither here nor there.
Well, that landfill is kind of a brown, what we call a brownfield issue these days.
Okay.
I mean, it's probably one of those things where, you know, if we'd had recycling back then, we might not have that brownfield there, but that's, you know, I got you, Steve, I got you, understand, I think we all do.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Is this the planning commission you're talking to?
I'm speaking on my, my own behalf.
Okay, I got you, all right.
Paul S. Wine, Carson City resident. I'll be brief. I think everybody generates trash, so everybody should participate in the cost of the collection and processing of that trash. Therefore, I'm supportive of the mandatory trash collection. I also would be supportive of the single-stream recycling. Thank you.
Okay, Paul. Yes, sir. Morning, Chaz.
Mr. Mayor, supervisors, my name's Chaz McQuarrie. I'm married to Ann McQuarrie, and I agree with everything she said.
You're a smart man, Chaz.
I also agree with some of what Aster said, too, in that I think continuing education in how it's going to work is important. And with that said, I support mandatory pickup, and I support single-stream recycling. Thanks.
What do you say about the folks who, who maybe have a receipt for doing their own or don't generate, you know, trash for the whole 30 days or bi-weekly?
Yes.
You don't generate enough trash.
And another issue I've heard is that some residents also have businesses, and they take their residential trash to their business, and it's picked up there. So I think there has to be some exemption mechanisms to cover circumstances like that. And, you know, I was very impressed with the presentation, and I'm sure Carissa can come up with some wording and some policies for you guys to consider that would account for that, those exemptions.
I see you're writing it down. Writing something down anyway. All right. Further public comment?
I'm Kathy McCormick, and I am a Carson City resident. I have always been inclined, and I did, by the way, participate in three of the input sessions that Carissa did, and learned a lot that way. So although I went in supporting single-stream and 100% pickup, I was sharing with her earlier that Ann, who just left us, but Ann McQuarrie sent me a paper that was done by Recycling Partnership, published at the end of 2016, that had some very interesting conclusions in terms of why those might be good ways to go. It says that one of the simplest strategies to improve program performance in terms of the tonnage collected is mandatory because opt-in, which is what they're calling, you know, the opportunity to opt-out as well, underperforms compared to automatic collection by about 100 pounds per household per year of recycling in terms, I guess, of what goes to the landfill they're talking about. What I would add to what has been said in terms of exemptions for folks who may now not be subscribing, is I'm wondering, Karen and Lori, you did a project some years ago now for our, the water bills, and I'm wondering if there might be some possibility like that where customers could contribute to, you know, funding folks with budget problems and, you know, just that we identify that they are being opted out for that reason or for some of the other sound valid reasons as well that have come up today. And one thing I would add, too, is that beyond the health and safety issues that Carissa and others have mentioned, I think that there is a cost issue to the city because I believe there would have to be more time for inspection and enforcement services on the part of Public Works if we don't have 100% participation. The second finding from this Recycling Partnership study in 2016 really surprised me, and they were saying there, and this is something that Carissa is also recommending, that moving from bins to roll carts for recyclables brought in equally, you know, more recyclables. So 100 pounds per household per year above what they were getting from bins. So that sounded fairly convincing to me as well. Oh, and, and they just happened to be talking about a community of 50,000 homes, so I guess that's a little larger than us, come to think of it, because that's close to our population. But anyway, if we were that size, that would have been almost 3,000 additional tons per year collected just from changing how, you know, what you take it to the curb end. Something that I brought up a little bit, and Rick and I discussed a bit in the community sessions, and I didn't go as far as I wish I had afterwards, but this, this report in this group, Recycling Partnership, is talking about a sleeping giant in the form of multifamily recycling. We had a person come to one of the sessions who lives in a motel, doesn't have a car, and doesn't have a way to recycle. And he was asking if there could be some centralized spot for him to do that, and that seems entirely reasonable. However, when I was reading this Recycling Partnership study, and I, at the time, I said, "Well, that's also applicable to any number of apartment homes in town." You know, because when I lived in an apartment, I didn't have recycling. I took it out Highway 50, but not everyone will. What the report said is that in the 465 studied communities, there, there was not a lot of consistency, but that many of those multifamily dwellings are not programmed for collection. They may even be considered commercial. I don't know how it is here, okay? And also that many are built with little space for collection retainers or truck access. And so those are obviously problems to be worked on and perhaps addressed through future, you know, requirements of new places like that, I don't know. But something that, oh, and this number really blew me away. They said that 30% of the homes, and I assume that's rough equivalent of families or, you know, persons living by themselves, in those communities were not part of their assessment because they didn't have the recycling because of living in those sorts of places. Yeah.
Thank you.
I think those are, those, oh, oh, oh. And I was one of the people in the sessions and also in my survey that expressed an interest in people being able to put out compostables, and I realize that that might be too big of a jump for the city as a whole. I was expressing a hope at the time that we might come up with a way to do that on a more limited basis. I myself, personally, I have a way, but I know that the folks who take my compostables, you know, don't have unlimited capacity in that way. And so there's maybe several options there, you know, that the city might be able to, you know, do something in terms of one or several sites where we can take that. I've also read about some commercial possibilities that could be coming to our area that might give us a really good entree there.
Thank you, Kevin. Thank you very much. Further public comment. We're going to finish public comment, then we're going to take a break and give everybody a chance to, then we'll come back and we'll bring it back to the board here. But let's see if we can get through public comment before we take a break. Mr. Volts, good afternoon to you.
Good afternoon.
Haven't seen you for a while. Where have you been hiding out?
Oh, not hiding out by any stretch.
Okay, all right.
Fred Volts, for the record, I wanted to make several comments about both the workshop process, which I attended four out of five of, regarding cities in the surrounding states and their policies on this. Out of 17 cities, 17 of them have mandatory trash pickup in the same size as Carson City, meaning the low to mid-50,000 range. And we're not in 1960 anymore with 5,000 people. So it seems like the time has come, and this is the appropriate moment to be doing this. I heard the people loud and clear who like going to the dump, and that's certainly their prerogative. The problem, though, is how are they containing the trash in the interim? Is it secure from wildlife and animals? And there's really no mechanism that the city has, either in the Health and Human Services area or Public Works, to make sure that trash is properly contained. So I would offer that up as a, another reason why mandatory is important. Yes, the vacant lots should be exempted, but I think everybody else needs to be part of the program. We don't allow privies or outhouses on lots indiscriminately, so why should we do the same thing with trash? I'm also concerned about the commercial dumpsters because Walmart and the major grocery store chains do a great job. It's all enclosed, it's all secure. But if you look at the other commercial installations in town, it's all over the place. And the dumpsters are not secure, and it's one of the reasons that there can be the illegal dumping. So if those dumpsters were wildlife-resistant, there wouldn't be the ability for people to do illegal dumping, at least in the dumpsters. One of the worst offenders in town should be one of the shining examples, and that's Carson Tahoe Hospital. There have been multiple reports of bears getting into their dumpsters because they are not secured. The Department of Wildlife has set traps unsuccessfully. And because they're right up against the mountains, it's a prime area for the wildlife to come down during the middle of the night. And we are tempting the fates by not having secure trash there because what if an employee, a visitor, a patient comes out in the middle of the night, early in the morning, they encounter the bears or other wildlife? What do they do? It is a problem. We need to deal with it. And looking at other mountain communities, which we are one of, Durango, Colorado, Vail, Colorado, Boulder, Colorado, Mammoth Lakes, California, Canmore, British Columbia, Yosemite National Park, and even the U.S. Forest Service in the Tahoe Basin, all have mandatory, universal containment of trash because of the wildlife issues that each and every one of those face. And it's not limited just to the west side of town. Let's be very clear about it. There are bears in the southeast part of town, there are wild horses in the northeast, coyotes, mountain lions, you name it. The attractant is very real because animals and wildlife species have much better senses of smell than we humans do. And the problem is, once you habituate them to coming into urban areas, they're going to keep coming back for the free buffet. And we had one street on the west side-
Our deer population understands that pretty well.
They do very well, Mayor. They do. And the problem, of course, is a little deeper than that because there are lots of attractants in individual yards. Trying to get people to replant the yards, that's not going to happen. But it's very clear that trying to minimize the bear issue and other large wildlife species is really important for us to do something about as a community. And finally, I was a little troubled by the statistics in the consultant's report on page eight. They're indicating that bear-proof containers cost approximately four times the price of standard containers. Well, I did a survey today, which I'll submit for the record along with the cities that have the mandatory pickup, and I found that the, if you buy one of these at a retail price, not wholesale, not in bulk, the 96-gallon toter that Waste Management is currently using with automatic collection capabilities is $184. Now, I heard 55 to 65 in bulk earlier today, so you have to ratchet that down accordingly. But there's a company named Bari Cuda, not spelled in the way you would expect, B-E-A-R-I-C-U-D-A. They have a 95-gallon container. It's wildlife-proof, it's $225 versus the 184. And finally, there's a company in Prescott, Arizona, named Kodiak Cans. They also make a 95-gallon container. It's $275. So I'm not understanding the four times the costing, and I would really like to see some data that proves that that's actually the case. Also, I, as with former Fire Chief Giomi, have had my can wrecked. I bought one of my own, I took the liability by the automated collection materials recently. And for the privilege of not having any liability that that happened, not by the bears but by the equipment, my cost is 350 a month less. Well, over a 15-year contract, that's $650. So that is well in excess of the cost of these containers if we were to do these universally in Carson City. Thank you.
Thank you, Fred. All right. A question, hold on a second.
Oh, sure.
Fred, does that mean you're trying to recommend that we ask in the bid for bear-proof-
Yes.
Or wildlife-proof-
Correct.
Cans instead of regular cans?
Well, what I would say is add another module, and number five, that will look at this. You look at the costing when it comes back to you in the various bids. All the people who are interested in submitting bids based on the RFP would then price it out accordingly, and you can decide from there.
Okay.
But let's just see what it actually costs and the benefit that we could get from it as a community versus continuing to do what we're doing now, which is really uncontrolled trash.
Are you suggesting, Fred, that they should be universal, that everyone should have one, or just in particular parts of town?
Absolutely. We need it universally because wildlife doesn't know about geographic boundaries. They haven't read a statute recently. We have wildlife throughout town, and we also have animals that unfortunately are not contained always, and they will knock over the cans and get into them as well or rip into the bags. So what we have presently, the hodgepodge of collection mechanisms, really is not getting the job done.
Keep calling, Price Carbon. Okay.
Yeah, keep calling. My name's Rob Basson. I've been a resident of Carson City for, well, since the early '70s. And when recycling came about, I was thrilled. I've been an active participant. It's been a good service, but I support the mandatory, single-stream recycling, for sure. I would think that you definitely want to consider exemptions because I can understand that there are some people here that, oh, that's a little extreme since they have one little bag, you know, in a week. And that's about it on that. And there's one thing I want to kind of throw as an aside. This is Carson City water. I got it out of my tap. It's good stuff. So be aware.
I wear a bike helmet, too, though, just for the record.
All right. All right, anybody else?
Hello, my name is Domingo Muñoz. I'm a Carson City resident for about 25 years. I'm the one who worked for Waste Management, and the only thing I want to say is I've been hired for do recycling. And the thing it is, is Waste Management, it only gives you quality. We have the trucks, we have the equipment, we have everything. Except for sometimes we're not in a good mood. You know, sometimes we are people, humans, like everybody. And the only thing I can say is I've been working for Waste Management for 20 years. And before that, that was Capital Sanitation. I did work for them, too, for about 10 years until Waste Management came in. And what I want to say is that we only think, we just want to give you, serve our community, clean up our community, no matter what. It's snowing, raining, windy, and sometimes, you know, the wind blows our containers, but we have other customers, you know, they're waiting for us to pick up their baskets or cans, whatever they have outside, and put them back inside. Sometimes it's impossible to serve everybody when it's windy, you know how bad weather we have in here. But we, my company has the equipment, has the people, has everything. You guys name it.
And your company is Waste Man-
Waste Management.
Okay.
Yes, right here. Questions? Yep.
Can I ask you a question, maybe on topic, off topic? To whom, what city does your immediate supervisor reside in?
Say that again?
What city does your immediate supervisor reside in?
I don't know what city, what city. You know what? I don't know that. I just know that I came when I was hired, and I was hired to do that.
All right.
And that's what my proposal was, was to serve my community, clean up my community, because I was like not born in here but grew up in here since the recycle program came in.
Well, you've got some folks back there listening to you, and you do a very good job of speaking, so.
Thank you, guys.
Do you hear that, Mr. M?
Sometimes we're just not in a good mood.
We could echo that.
All right, anybody else? Yes, sir.
Good afternoon. My name's John Wood. I'm going to be the odd man out here because everybody else seems to want the single-stream and mandatory and all that good stuff. I happen to be a free-market type person. I would like to see competitive bidding, or not competitive bidding for the franchise, but competitive bidding for the individual customers so that we can have competition. I think competition for the business on a regular basis is going to keep the cost down and the service up. It's like, you know, I don't drink milk, but if I was forced to buy a half a gallon of milk every month, I'd just throw it away. I mean, we've had some people in here, you can see there are a lot of people, everybody has their own horse to ride. And I don't think that we can have a, a system that is going to be one-size-fits-all, that is going to be affordable for everyone. So I would, my, my particular bent would be towards allowing free enterprise to start picking up the trash. You know, we have several people in town, other than Waste Management, who are in that business, and I was kind of curious if we do go with whoever, probably Waste Management because they're the big, big guys in the, in the, in the business, what happens, what happens to the, the private individuals who are also collecting even commercial trash right now if we give that franchise to one, one particular company? Are we putting them out of business? And I think that that would be anti-competitive and anti-free enterprise if we were to do that. So I think that's something that we need to consider is, is what we're going to be doing in the long run to any competition, competition out there. Waste Management is, is famous for coming in, I happen to work in a casino on Sparks, and, you know, Waste Management, it took me a year to try to figure out how to even get ahold of somebody that would actually return a call to me. And, and there is no way that, that they've given, Sparks has given, and Reno has given a franchise to Waste Management for trash, and nobody can compete with them. So, so it's like I get a bill from them every month from my facility for the, for the wet garbage, and I have no choices. I can't, I can't say, well, you know, ask Osasey or whoever to give me a competing bid on hauling the garbage. I, I'm only, I either don't haul garbage and I just let it pile up in my parking lot, or I have to, I'm forced into paying one particular garbage provider. So I would like to see, again, the free enterprise. I love free enterprise. The other, the other option I would say is that if we're not going to go with free enterprise and allow free enterprise to pick up the garbage, perhaps the city should go into the garbage collection business. Some cities do that. That way, it's, it's, that way, if you're going to make it mandatory, you can collect it on the property taxes. We have people, we can come and talk to you if there's a problem with the collection. Waste Management does not have an easy way to contact them. I mean, I would suggest that they have at least an email, you know, I mean, I understand how they don't want to hear somebody calling them and, you know, grouse-ing at them, but if you had even an email contact or some way that you could get some satisfaction out of them. I will admit that their local people here that come around and collect the garbage are phenomenal. They do pick up stuff that falls out of the can. It's just unbelievable, personal, the person who is driving the truck is a phenomenal employee that I would like to have working for me. But that, that being said, there's more to it than just the person that comes out and picks up your garbage. Okay?
I have a question from John.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Is that for that, John?
You make, you make a very strong point about free enterprise, and I am with you in a general philosophical way. What do you say, however, to our consultant who says that this would be trucks up and down our residential streets, which aren't in great shape in the first place, and cause a, cause a lot of problems with those streets going forward? So it's kind of a balancing act.
Well, you know, if you think about it, I mean, you look around, the garbage truck is not the only truck that goes up and down our streets every day. Okay? We have trucks delivering things, we have trucks hauling things, we have construction vehicles going over roads every day. It doesn't seem to, I mean, affect us in, in who we choose for our services in what the other trucks are doing. I mean, if we have two companies that are out there collecting garbage, is that going to be 100% worse wear on the road than, than all of the other vehicles that use the road? You understand what I'm trying to get at?
I, I do, except that I think in terms of deliveries and trucks, those are mainly on the main thoroughfare, so I'm talking about the residential streets. But, but I, just a question, philosophical question.
Well, do we need, let's put it this way. Do we need to give a franchise to UPS over FedEx and over the, over USPO? Their trucks, I see their trucks, and they've got some pretty decent-sized trucks going up and down my road every day, at least three or four times, three or four different vehicles, three or four different companies making deliveries. You know, I mean, you have to think things through as far as that goes.
Thank you.
Okay?
So, so John, one of the, the reasons to consider a franchise agreement that does limit the competition, as you're suggesting, is that the capital investment that's necessary to serve an area of this size, and I think that's what the issue, you know, because maybe you could say, okay, we'll grant two franchisees. So maybe, like we were thinking in the demolition of construction projects, maybe we just open that up and say, if you meet these required conditions, everyone gets the friend, you know, right? Everyone gets it, and then here's the list of authorized ones that the construction companies can call. So I, I think we might be looking to do what you're talking about there. But in the residential and commercial, if a company has to spend $10 million in truck purchases to eat and hauling equipment and bins and all this other, if we did two or three of them, we might end up with no one that could sustain the business because it isn't profitable enough. And, and I guess that's where the concern comes in, is while we're trying to do the free enterprise, we end up with no one providing trash service for Carson City.
But is it incumbent upon government to make the trash collection profitable?
Well, if, the only way that, it doesn't have to be profitable, is the one you suggested, which is we do it ourselves.
Right.
I'm saying no one in the business market will bid if it's not profitable, out in the community bidding. So we could do it for, at cost, but I don't see anybody commercially saying, let me go and give you trash service in Carson City, and I'm going to lose $10 a resident. They're not going to do it.
No, no, they won't do that. I understand, but, but they're not going to come in and compete. If I was, if I was in, in the business and I wanted to compete in the trash hauling business, I would sit down and I would look at, you know, the possibility of winning customers, what it costs me to collect it, what it costs me to tip, and then go out there and start knocking on doors and asking, would you like this service? We will- We will, you know, instead of saying that I have to have a 96 gallon one, I live on a hillside. Okay? Now, so for me, I have to roll this heavy thing all the way down to the bottom of the hill. Thankfully, it's to the bottom of the hill, and I'm not at the bottom of the hill rolling it up every time for collection. But if I had the opportunity, if I was in the business, then I could go, and I could say, okay, excuse me, ma'am, Mr. or Mrs. Senior Citizen, as a part of this service, for the same exact price you're paying now, we'll come down to your garage and pull it out to the street. I mean, there are things that people can do in economy. It's like, we don't all drive Chevrolets, you know? I mean, we could give Chevrolet a franchise for the city. Everybody drive Chevrolets, maybe we could get them for a whole bunch cheaper. But what's that going to do to the Ford dealership, the Dodge dealership, and the, you know, the rest of them? I'm just trying to say, I love free enterprise, and I would love to be able to see us think about that, rather than give someone a 15-year lock on something like this. The other thing is, is now I heard things like mandatory penalties for not paying, you know, if somebody doesn't participate, right? So how is that done? Is that done by the trash collection company, or is that, or is that going to be done through the city? Is the city not going to be the police enforcement? Okay. So, 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 okay, well, that's what I'm saying, is if we're going, if we're going, if we were going to do that, then that would be another step for us to go into the trash hauling business. Okay? But we need to, we need to think these things through, all of them. I mean, we can't, I understand everybody wants to see recycling done, but again, I mean, if you think about what, I would love to ask the various trash recyclers, is it profitable? You know, do they make any money on the recycling? Or what do they do with the materials that they collect in that recycling stream? See, that's the thing that nobody ever asks. We say, oh, it's wonderful, because we take it out to the street, and the garbage company picks it up, and they say, okay, we're recycling it. Do we have any reports on what happens to it? Does it eventually actually get recycled? I heard somebody say that cardboard is extremely valuable. It's not right now. We can't hardly, we bail it, and we have to give it away. They don't give us a dime for it, because it's so depressed right now. So what I'm saying is, again, it all needs to be somewhere where we can make, you know, a company, if they're going to be in business, if they're going to be a profitable business, is it our business to make sure they're profitable, or is it their business to make sure they're profitable? Okay?
Okay. I got it, John. Thank you, and I'm glad that you ended up on the upright when you bring it down your hill.
Well, I'm just thankful that I live at the top of the hill, and when I take the garbage down, I go all the way to the bottom of the hill with it, and I have to carry the empty one up.
Just be careful what is rolling down.
But my neighbor across the street is an elderly gentleman, and he has to haul his to the top of the hill. I feel sorry for him.
Okay, I got you.
But he does. One more thing about recycling, we were talking about yard waste and things like that. I compost all my leaves and all my wet garbage. There's none of my wet garbage goes in the trash. You know, I do throw away, somebody might crucify me for saying this, but plastic bottles go in the trash. I'm sorry. I don't recycle plastic bottles, because I know that Waste Management, it ends up in their trash, in the dump anyway. You know, I would love to see a report from whoever is going to be taking on this franchise, if we do give them a franchise, what they do with that recyclable material. Does it actually get recycled, or does it just get a nod and a wink about recycling, and then go to the dump? All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Anybody else want to weigh in, before we take a break?
Can I?
For a number two time? Come on, Kathy, come on.
I just, I meant...
We don't want to get into much of an argument here, but we're getting the ideas down, so go ahead.
I just meant to say something about, ask her's concern about shattered glass in single stream. Because I asked the very same question in the very first of the sessions that I went to, and I was reassured by Enrique, your counterpart, that that is not a problem for single stream, because of what they call MRF, you know, the Material Recovery Facility that it goes to, ultimately in Sacramento, there's a MRF light, I guess, in Reno, and this, of course, is Waste Management's stuff, you know? And they pull out what they can handle here in Reno, and then it goes to Sacramento, where they handle the rest, and shards of glass are not an issue, apparently, in that process.
Okay. Got it. Understood. For a second time, Mr. Oxby, come on up.
My bad. Steve Oxby. It seems to me that bear-proof containers would solve one of my problems, and that's blowing trash on pickup day.
Okay.
I assume that the wind's not going to blow the lids off, so.
I didn't, I didn't, I didn't hear that, Steve.
I'm assuming the wind won't blow those lids off.
Okay.
And then the other thing is, is I would hope there would be a period where the vendor would not be increasing rates, you know, a period where they, I mean, it was like every other, every other bill, there was an increase. Not big, but it adds up after a while. So maybe they could have a period where they can increase the rates.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you, Steve. All right. Anybody else want to weigh in? I know we've got a lot of people out there who are interested in applying for, you know, submitting, you know, proceeding with the RFP. You know, feel free to talk if you want, but my suggestion is, what you're hearing is kind of, what you kind of need to hear, you don't really need to say, and then talk through your response to the RFP. It's a better way of doing it, so you reply. Okay? All right. Anything else? Anybody? We're going to take a break, and we're going to come back here in about five minutes, 10 minutes, and then we'll decide where we're going to go. Okay? All right. All right, staff, you have anything further to say before we take it up here?
No, Mayor, I think we're good.
Anybody in the public want to, anybody in the public want to weigh in now? I mean, have you had a chance to? Anybody? All right, so the hard stuff will come back here. It's my intention probably to, you know, to talk about each of the decision points that you've got, it's a pretty good little way of going about it. But I understand that Supervisor Monkowski, he's gone today, but he left the city manager with some statements, so he wants to have us read that during our board discussion. So if you want to read it and the record, we'll go from there.
Sure will. Since I will, I'm going to start off, this is dated April 1st, 2018, 7:30 PM. Since I will not be at the Board of Supervisors meeting for the afternoon session, regarding the RFP for the solid waste franchise contract, please provide a copy, which I will, of this email to the supervisors, so they can see what my questions and concerns are. Sloan recommendation number one, that's our consultant, I agree with the continuing, I agree with continuing the franchised residential and commercial service. On construction and demolition, I am good with whatever we determine is best for the landfill revenues. Sloan recommendation number two, I agree with mandatory service, but only if we include limited exclusions for large parcels and residents that show proof of continual and consistent receipts for self-hauling to the landfill. That will provide those that are vocal and adamantly opposed to mandatory service the opportunity, should they take the time and effort to comply with our requirements, to opt out. Sloan recommendation number three, I agree with single stream using 96 gallon carts. I have no preference between weekly or bi-weekly pickup for single stream, but I suspect it will greatly reduce any additional costs if it is bi-weekly. I agree, I agree with a fee-based commercial recycling program. Businesses can opt in or opt out as they please, but at least they will have the option. Sloan recommendation number four, I would prefer a fluctuate... Sloan recommendation number four, I would prefer a fluctuating yard waste allowance based on seasonal needs. Higher allowances in spring and fall and lesser allowances in summer and winter. Additional conditions, the chosen vendor must have a local office and adequate personnel to service the local clientele. Bear-proof containers should be an option at an additional fee for the container and the added labor to pick them up. And I think we've had a little discussion, there are some that are automatic, but certainly if it's not automatic, Supervisor Bunkowski is looking at an additional fee for the labor for the driver to get out. We must have a road impact fee as part of the contract. Can I answer any questions on what Supervisor Bunkowski has submitted for the record?
You don't want to be Brad?
I don't want to be Brad. Well, I mean, just on, if I confuse anyone.
You write back to, you write back to Brad and say, I hope you're having a good time, but, but, and then just leave it.
Yeah.
It's all right.
He missed a great meeting. That'll be the but, Mr. Mayor. Thought you missed a great meeting.
Ask him for a full report on how they pick up waste in New Zealand.
Yeah. All right, Supervisor About, Karen, go.
Great. Well, it's like it's ditto, but nonetheless, I do, on point number one, the franchise residential and commercial, I agree, and I think construction and demolition should be separated out to keep construction competitive. As far as mandatory, I think we should have mandatory with exemptions. What those exemptions are, I think it definitely needs to include proof of hauling, but other than that, you know, I, size of lot, that sort of thing, I'm not so sure that that needs to be a part of the factor. Then as far as single stream, I think that bi-weekly recycling is the most cost-effective, so I'm more in favor of that, and I do feel that there should be fee-based commercial recycling with the option to opt in or out on that wherever it's applicable. And then I think there should be options for yard waste and a seasonal allowance, however that's painted in terms of the person that applies, but I, we definitely have a seasonal need that's astronomical at certain times of the year and not at others, so I think that's the most practical. I definitely feel there should be a road impact fee besides the franchise fee. I think there should be a negotiable aspect in the contract, as you mentioned, for food waste, compostability, or future options in terms of what they do with, with those products. I think delinquent payments need to be handled by the hauler, I want to say that upfront. We don't want to be the bill collector. I do think there needs to be provisions for bear-proof containers. How this is formulated, I mean, if we made bear-proof containers citywide, I think Fred makes a good point on that. I need to see how that costs out. Otherwise, certain areas definitely have to have them, but nonetheless, bears aren't area-specific, so. I do insist on local customer service, that's an absolute, and I would like to know what the franchisees individually, what they do with their recyclables. Okay, I think that's an important thing that we should know. That's where I'm coming from.
Let me just ask a clarification question. When you say C and D should be, are you saying that they should bid in and out, just so you'd have a competitive bid, or you just take it out altogether?
Take it out altogether.
So the, so the RFP would say C and D is outside?
That's correct.
Okay.
Do we have, though, that, I actually liked her idea that you have to meet some conditions, and we'd let everyone in that wants to do C and D, but I still think that there should be controls that we put in the C and D and conditions that must be met, but anybody that meets it, we would certify them on a list.
I agree with that.
Okay, because I don't want it just to be open-ended on C and D, so I could live with that. The, I agree, I don't want to limit lot sizes or things of that nature for the opt-out. I think it needs to be the few conditions that we find appropriate. I don't want the city in the business of collecting, and please be sure that the vacant lots and vacant homes at any given time are not assessed. We certainly don't want people paying that have no trash service, and I think the rest of the comments were, and I do want the bid to include general containers versus, like Fred said, how much is it going to cost us if we went to wildlife-proof? I don't really want to call them bear, because I kind of agree that different areas have different, the deer, whatever it is, so if it's only going to cost us 50 cents over 15 years, then why don't we already go ahead and move to that? And then I'd also like to see options for people not to have to be the 96-yard bin. Can we please have options for the smaller bin for those homes that really will never produce that type of thing? And then I might need a clarification on the bi-weekly discussion that I heard. Does that mean all my trash only goes every other week? I don't understand that.
It would be weekly trash and every other week recyclables, so half the city's recyclables would be collected one week, the other half, the other week.
But I thought we weren't having two bins. I'm missing something, so how do I do that?
You, you do have, so you have one cart for your trash and one cart for your recyclables that you place out every other week. You no longer have the two tubs where you put aluminum and one.
Oh, so everybody is going to get two bins. I'm sorry, I thought I asked earlier and you said, no, it's one bin. I'm sorry.
I apologize. I misunderstood and thought you were referring to the current two-tub system.
No, 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 no. But you will have two, again, I want the public to understand, you're going to get two bins.
Weekly trash and a trash designated, we call them carts.
I'm with the every bi-weekly then for the recycle.
Okay, I apologize for that.
To keep the cost reasonable for the community.
Well, while I'm a huge advocate of free enterprise, I don't see this as something we can do. I, in experience with Cablevision and living in a city formerly where they had only one supplier, that was bothersome, but in this, in this situation, we have to have our garbage picked up, and if you get into a competitive environment, the specter that was raised by Supervisor Bagwell is very real to me. It could degenerate into a situation where we had trouble keeping, although it might sort of sell out over time in the marketplace, at first it would be a problem, and I'm very concerned, as everyone in this room has heard me say on many occasions, that we have to fix our roads, so not having trucks on them on our residential streets, which are in woeful shape, haven't been worked on in a decade or more, except in spot situations. Trucks going up and down the street daily, competitive environment, and they're heavy trucks, we're going, would cause a problem, so I want a road impact fee. I have to say, we need to go mandatory, single stream. I like Fred's suggestion of the bear, and I think in this community, or wildlife-proof, let's put it, wildlife-proof containers, consequently, I would say we should go with that even if it costs a little more. I think he's right. If you, if you do give a 15-year, it can cost out and be of great profit to the community. So I pretty much agree with what people are saying up here. I would like to add that I don't care whether it's weekly or bi-weekly, if it's, if bi-weekly is more cost-effective. What you're saying basically is that the trash would be picked up weekly, but the recyclables on the other week, which is really basically the current system with, with the change in the containers. So I think that covers it for me, unless there's something I've forgotten. I wrote them all down. But I really want to emphasize that road impact fee. I don't think the mayor's laughing suggestion, maybe we should go 10 cents, but certainly we, those trucks do cause a lot of weight on residential streets, and residential streets are in tough shape.
Let me ask on the, on the serious side here, I mean, follow up what John just said. Does, is the highway road impact fee, does that form part of the RFP, or is that just something, do people bid on that as the amount, or do we, or do we give them an amount? How does, how's that handled in the RFP process?
Mr. Mayor, what we've typically seen is that the city designates the, both the franchise fee amount and the road impact fee amount, and then, so that is not an option for the participating haulers.
So in the RFP, what do you put in there for the amount? I mean, do you have an amount in there when you issue the RFP that'll say, you know, your RFP has to include a road impact fee of X? Is that what you're saying? Or do you send an RFP out, what's your, what's your position on road impact fees? What do you say, cost, not cost? I mean, what's the number? I mean, where do you give it, where do you get it from?
That, that is almost always set ahead of time with staff, and because they're percentage-based fees, it, it doesn't impact the ability to compare proposals, because we, we add the formulas in, and it.
Great pass-through.
And it, it does that, so.
So are, are road impact fees legal? Because we're going to charge the hauler trucks, but not the UPS, not the FedEx, not the...
We can look into that.
To make sure.
To make sure that we're on solid ground.
Right. Thank you. Because I know franchise fees are maximum, what, 5% or something by law, so I just, I just don't want us to suddenly.
Well, I think certainly the language, the language of an impact fee, we'll probably have to take a look at, but certainly the concept, I think we can, we can figure out what to call it.
Okay. Well, let me, let me suggest this, and then listen up, board here, I'm just listening to all the conversations, so let's see if we could take, I'll outline what I think I've heard here today in terms, and we'll see if it goes as a motion. First, we would, on the decision points, we would continue with franchise residential and commercial service. We would exempt C and D service, which would be on the open market. We would have a road impact fee that would be set by this board. We would have mandatory service with the exemption of at least, people who could prove that over a certain period of time that they, that they have in fact used the landfill here with deposit receipts, or however we determine that to be done, but I think deposit receipts over a period of time works. Second, that there's no, that vacant lots and vacant homes are not part of the mandatory service until there's somebody in them. Next, on single stream, that we do, and on mandatory service, I think what we're saying also is we want to see the cost out for wildlife-proof containers for everybody in the city who's on mandatory service. Is that, I think that's where we are. On single stream recycling, there would be automated, a single stream recycling service with standard 96-gallon carts, and it would be done bi-weekly, so the trash would be picked up one week, next week would be recycles, and that there'd be fee-based commercial recycling that incentivizes both the service provider and the customer to participate, and that we are provided at least a quarterly statement of what's happening on the recyclable material, and, and, you know, what's happening to it, and, and just what's going on with that in terms of, you know, where's it going, and what's, you know, just, are they making money on it, not making money, whatever. And that on yard waste, we'll, we'd ask the proposers to include possible options to remove yard waste, which would include differing pickups at different times of the year to affect, you know, what happens in the winter months and the spring on, and, you know, in the autumn when we have a lot of leaves and things like that, and the associated fee with each of those options that they propose. Did I miss anything on that?
I wanted the option for people, I think there's a lot of like patio homes, little apartments, little things, I, we need the smaller canister size. I mean, I'm, I'm sorry, 296-yard bins is not going to work everywhere in town, one for trash and one for recycle, it's just too big.
I just also like to add that I forgot that the unlimited collection on the yard waste is a good concept to at least investigate how, how we could go about that, but you're right, at only the times of the year when it's necessary.
What did you had to say about container size?
Mr. Mayor, I, I was taking notes, I want to make sure I understood. It would be weekly collection of trash and bi-weekly collection of recycling.
I think that's what I'm saying.
Okay, thank you for the clarification, thank you. I just wanted to make sure I had your direction. Thank you, sir.
Okay, all right. Anything else you're not clear about? Are you okay on that 32 versus 96?
Yes, yes.
I mean, that just kind of makes sense. I mean, people get a chance to do what they want to do there.
Secondly, could I add something that's not in this group, but I'm, I'm concerned, and I don't know whether we do this by the downtown NID or whatever, I periodically, as a matter of fact, probably three times a week, walk my dog downtown, and she actually drags me around sometimes on a leash, and I find a lot, a lot of stuff in the downtown area that's just out, you know, in crannies, in places where people have tossed them, et cetera, cans, cups, et cetera. I pick them up and throw them in the garbage. I'm not looking for any phrase for that, but I am looking for it to stop, and I don't know how we do it, but I would really like to see us discuss that at some point. It's outside this, but it's still a problem.
Got one thing, and then I think you called it bulky item. Don't forget to have something in there for...
Lori's washing machine. Just call it that.
No, I need a new one, no, anyway, yeah.
Her washing machine.
Whatever you want to call it, hazardous material day, bulky day, I'd love to see that in the proposal.
All right, did I catch everything, board?
Got it.
Somebody want to make a motion to that effect?
And also that delinquent payments are made.
Delinquent payments are made, are enforced by?
The hauler.
The hauler.
Yes.
Right. Okay, we missing any, we missing anything there?
Yes. The negotiable aspects for such things as food waste and things like that down the road in the contract.
Yeah, I thought that was going to be, yeah, but I think that's in there, but I think we.
I want to make sure it's in there.
Clarify it's in there. We want to be able to do that. What are we missing then, in terms of?
We overdid you?
Did we do anything, I mean, seriously, I mean, not to, did we do anything that's going to cause you problems on putting this together?
No, sir.
All right, all right. Board, are we okay with that? If it's okay with you, I'll make that motion. Is there a second to that motion? Motion in three sec, motion in three seconds. We won't call Mr. Bunkowski. So on the motion, all in favor signify, everybody saying aye.
Aye.
Posnay. Eyes have it. All right, that's it. Anything further come before the board this afternoon? We have closing, public comment now. Anybody want to weigh in? The end? Anybody?
Update on the flood? I have two, two quick items. So for the, for the detention base and the Supervisor About, I think you brought that up, ma'am, the contractor is going to have people on staff throughout the storm, very well aware of the potential for flooding, and obviously the mud flow that resulted from it last storm. In addition to that, the governor has ordered, at the state level, and we follow, all flags at half-mast tomorrow for the Air Force pilot who was killed down at Nellis Air Force Base yesterday, and we will have an update, I will get it to the board probably early tomorrow morning on the storm. I haven't had a chance to sit down with our emergency preparedness folks, but I'll get you an update tomorrow morning on what we think we're going to be looking at. But really, Friday night into Saturday morning, looks like it's still going to be, please get, correct me if I'm wrong, Darren, but it looks like that's going to be the, the worst part of the storm.
Okay. And also, you know, I think it's a great idea, the flags go half-mast for the, for the airmen we lost. I just read, I think during the noon hour here or sometime, we lost two Marines in a helicopter crash down near the border.
Correct. Yeah, I think it was actually four.
Four.
Four Marines, four, yeah. Can't remember, it wasn't a, can't remember the type of aircraft, helicopter it was. Okay. Anything else to come before us today? Anything? Anything? Are we ready to adjourn until next trash day?
To adjourn.
Just remember, if it stinks, we're in it. We're adjourned.